Good evening. I want to call the regular meeting of the City Council to order on Tuesday, April 15th. Clerk Meredith, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Watkins is excused this evening. Vice Mayor Samley?
Here.
Councilmember Dykens?
Here.
Councilmember Savage?
Here.
Councilmember Staley?
Present.
Councilmember Walker is excused this evening. Councilmember Ward?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Our invocation tonight will be given by Rob Kelly of the Cavalry Baptist Church, and after that, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Dykens. If you are able to and willing, please stand.
Father, we just come before you tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to pray tonight to you, and thank you for all your goodness to us. We thank you for Jesus, that He came to this earth to live a sinless life, who has suffered, bled, and on the cross for us, and that He was buried and risen again three days later. And we celebrate that, Father, and thank you that Jesus proved that He was not only 100% God, but He was 100% man. He went to the cross and died for us, and He's alive today. Father, we thank you for the City Council, and I pray that you give them wisdom tonight as they have their meeting, protect them. Father, watch over them, and I pray that you would also be our first responders tonight. Thank you for them. I pray that you protect them and give them strength as they help protect our church, our city, and so, Father, we thank you for that. Lord, I pray that you would just help us to remember, to take care of the homeless and the poor and the needy of our city. Lord, help us to be your servants, and help us to love you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the Father, on the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed and considered and decisions made relating thereto. Tonight, item number 1A, we have awards and recognition. We have Kingman's Hilltop Wastewater Treatment Plant recognized with ADQ's Bronze Level VESP certification. Hilltop Wastewater Treatment Plant has been awarded the Bronze Level Certification in the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, or ADEQ, Voluntary Environmental Stewardship Program, VESP. This recognition reflects the city's strong track record of regulatory compliance and operational excellence in wastewater management. The Bronze Level VESP certification is granted to facilities that have demonstrated three consecutive years of full compliance with applicable regulations. With that, I will call Rob Owens or Kealan Yarborough, whichever one wants to come forward. Good evening and congratulations.
Good evening, Mayor, or excuse me, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. Appreciate it. Appreciate the opportunity to be here with you guys tonight and with our wastewater treatment team. This team is certainly the heart of our operations group, and they are responsible for managing seven regulatory permits, completing over 1,000 sample collection events each year that provide analysis for over 200 analytes. Wastewater treatment is certainly a choreographed balance of mechanics, biology, chemistry, and hydraulics, and in order to achieve, or excuse me, in order to achieve compliance, and this team does an incredible job combining each of those to achieve excellence. If I can take a quick minute to also recognize one of our teammates who couldn't be with us tonight. Her and her husband are dealing with a family medical emergency. Rasil Mahia certainly bridges the gap between our operations compliance and plays an integral role in managing regulatory data and reports submission to our state, federal, and local regulatory agencies, and certainly our thoughts and prayers go out to her.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We want to gather up front, council, for a picture? Congratulations. Want to get in the middle? Kealan? Congratulations. Yes.
Thank you.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Mojave Community College Film Festival Award. The City of Kingman's Office of Tourism, in collaboration with the Communications and Marketing Department, will present to the council their award-winning submission to the 2025 Mojave Community College Film Festival, Kingman: Past, Present, and Future. The documentary, which showcases the city's rich history through a modern lens using AI, received the first place in the documentary category at the festival held on April 9th. Welcome, Sarah, and congratulations.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, council. Before I show the video, I'd like to bring up Adam Geller, who is the administrative coordinator for the Office of Tourism. He was the brains kind of behind the video, and he will explain to you how he took an AI program and pretty much brought all of our old photography from like the 1930s, 1950s to life.
Welcome, Adam.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and council. So, just a brief background about this video. I'm always looking for ways to utilize technology in a way that makes our lives easier, and this is a good example of using technology to honor the past, which is kind of a different use for AI. So, what this is, is it's historical photos that have been put into the computer so that they can be brought to life, and it basically has been narrated by Roy Purcell, who created the first exhibit at the Mojave County Museum, and additionally did the murals in chloride. So, this is just to honor the history of Mojave County in a unique and new way utilizing technology. Thank you.
Always the cycles of past and present reveal the future for that individual or society which takes the effort to record and become cognizant of the historic voice. But what is history but a record of man's search for himself, only to realize in the end that death is but the beginning of another cycle? From the human cultures began the divergence that led to the development of the Mojavis and the Walupis, who today inhabit the surrounding area. Men such as Sitgreaves, Whipple, Hives, and Beal charted the area, giving their names to many of today's most famous landmarks. Beal gave his name to the springs, which were later to become the site of a military outpost and the beginning of what is today the City of Kingman. The development of the great mining industry begins as exploration reveals the great mineral wealth hidden in the rugged and abounding mountains. In 1882, the railroad reaches the valley between the Surbat and the Walupi Mountains, and the town of Kingman is born. Meanwhile, World War II gives the final blow to the mining industry, and the thriving communities of Chloride, Mineral Park, and Oatman become ghost towns. In Mojave County, the story is one of fantastic growth, with population more than doubling since 1960. The old culture as we have known it has passed into oblivion, giving rise to our new generation. And while the technological level of development traversed by the new generation will be a far cry from that of their predecessors, they will, in effect, be only retracing steps in the patterns of growth, as the seeds of life and death continue to expand, the pulse of the cycle of history.
Thank you, Sarah. I think that was such a good rendition of our community, good representation. I enjoyed it. It is well-deserved to win first place, in my opinion. Council, do you have any comments for the award? All right, perfect. Okay, well, moving on. Congratulations, again. Call to the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Clerk Meredith, do we have anyone for call to the public?
We do not, Vice Mayor.
All right, moving on. Consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from consent, the consent agenda, and will be considered separately. Council, is there any items that you wish to remove from the consent agenda? No? I do need to remove item C. I have a conflict of interest. So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, and D.
Show move.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Counselor Ward for consent agenda item C.
Except temporary blanket easements for installation of utilities at Southern Vista 5, tract This item was previously approved at the April 2nd, 2025 council meeting. Since that time, an updated agreement removing Angle Homes and adding Pioneer Trust 9320 was provided to staff. The updated agreement is attached for review and approval. Any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve this item.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you, Counselor Ward. All right, action items. Item 4A, award of bid to purchase 519 East Beale Street. At the January 21st, 2025 City Council meeting, the council directed staff to move forward with an RFP for the sale of the 519 East Beale Street building, parcels 30308119 and 30308122A. The total appraised value was $1,010,000. The city received one bid, which was submitted by the Historic Electric Vehicle Foundation for $925,000, with the condition that the upper parking lot, parcel 30308122A, would be maintained as a freely accessible parking, public parking lot. Staff recommends acceptance of the bid and direction to open escrow to transfer title. Welcome, Bennett.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor, City Council. In addition to that description, I'd like to note that the reduced bid, and you noted it, that it is lower than the original appraisal. So it's for the parcel 30308122A, and they will agree to access that as freely accessible parking. When we put together figures for maintenance of that parking, we estimated that over the next six years, it's going to cost about $95,000 to $105,000 if the city were to maintain it on its own and keep it as a public parking. So, this is a potential viable option with that reduction. And what I'd also like to provide a little background in regards to the Electric Vehicle Museum, how it started in Kingman. The current museum at the powerhouse has over 100 years of electric vehicle history, and attracts media and many visitors interested in the electric vehicle history and development. This all started in 2014, when Kingman became the world's only electrical vehicle museum. And it became, it began with a simple display of about 12 electric vehicles, so it has since grown to outgrown the area. We currently have about 3,900 square foot, and, you know, it really fit in well because of our longest stretch of Route 66 and how it played out with our history with transportation. So, the Electric Vehicles Foundation's plan to purchase the 519 Beale Street and develop it into a standalone facility really is the next step to the evolution of this. So should the City Council decide to move forward with this sale, economic development and tourism see this as an opportunity to definitely bring more visitors to Kingman, and it aligns with our plan to continually pull traffic off of, you know, what will be a bypass coming down the road. So, in setting up the building sale, the City Council determined that this sale should promote tourism and economic development, and that is the case if it is turned into a museum. So the staff believes that the proposed future use of the property as the Electric Vehicle Museum aligns with City Council's desired property use if you choose to proceed. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Vice Mayor, for any questions and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Bennett. Any questions or comments from council? Yep, Counselor Savage?
Bennett, question on the appraisal as opposed to the offer. Does that appraisal value include both those lots?
Correct.
So the top north?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments, council? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion that we move to sell the property.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, moving on to 4B. Parking lot lease at the northeast corner of Andy Devine Avenue and 3rd Street. At the November 19th, 2024 meeting, the City Council discussed the existing lease agreement for the city-owned parking lot located at the northeast corner of Andy Devine Avenue and 3rd Street. Council continued the item in order to have additional discussions. Staff reached out to Fleishman AZ Investment Corporation to discuss the lease and possible modifications. Mr. Fleishman asked that the city consider selling the property to him. Given the limited supply of parking in the downtown area, staff recommends against selling the parking lot and instead recommends terminating the lease, which will require a 12-month notice. Staff recommends council authorize issuing a notice of termination. Manager Walsh?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. As mentioned in the backup there, this was originally brought before council at the November 19th meeting. There were some concerns by council regarding limited parking downtown, some concerns regarding with the lease, Fleishman and his tenants being able to restrict parking in that parking lot with the attractions that we have downtown, the number of First Fridays, the number of people that come out to First Friday, along with some of the additional improvements that are going down. I think there was some concern that there's insufficient parking, and if this city-owned parking lot were restricted from public use, that it could cause some additional problems and lack of parking. At the 19th meeting, council continued the item and asked that staff reach out to Mr. Fleishman to see if some agreement could be made. I did have a number of meetings with Mr. Fleishman over Zoom and on the phone. We had considered, I believe, one of his main concerns is he has a number, he has a couple of rooms on the back of the Hotel Brunswick that he leases out, and one of his concerns was being able to ensure that those had parking for it. So we discussed the possibility of reducing the lease to just two parking stalls. However, we weren't able to get to an agreement on what that price should be and that. So ultimately, we backed away from that. He wanted to express his interest in purchasing the lot. As mentioned in the item there, staff recommends against selling that lot just due to the parking. And instead, we recommend that that, we issue notice that we terminate that lease. It is required by the agreement to give a 12-month notice, so basically 12 months from now, we would be able to terminate that lease. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have one person signed up to speak, Mr. Steve Smith.
Good evening. Vice Mayor, council members, my name is Steve Smith. I'm a resident of Kingman. I'm on the Board of Directors for Fleishman Arizona Corporation, of which Vernon is the chairman. I'm here to speak for him. I'll do my best. Quite a while ago, Vernon Fleishman started seriously investing in Kingman. The city and the city's government have benefited from those investments. He bought the old call center, which is now Beale Celebrations. He bought the Brunswick, when it was just another gutted hotel on Andy Devine, and it's now a restaurant, our gallery, and two studio apartments in the rear. Vernon realized, as most have, the parking problem was what the problem had was, and if he was going to be successful in developing his properties and ensuring that his renters, patrons, and hopefully eventually residents should have a place for their car, Vernon negotiated. The lease Vernon negotiated was primarily to be sure that the restaurant and hotel had places for patrons to park. He can understand it would anger workers who would want to park close to where they are working to be denied parking, but that eliminates places for patrons who want to dine or browse in the gallery or get to their studios. Safety was also an issue as well, since Vernon did not want people to attempt to cross Andy Devine or to have to walk far down dark alleys to access the studio departments in the back. Vernon's offer to buy the lot was with the same desire to provide parking and safety. The renegotiated lease that the city offered, having only two stalls, at the same rate he was paying for the whole parking lot, as Warner would put it, just didn't make sense. Do you know Warner? Vernon turned 70 a few days ago. He's retired, and he hopes to sell the Brunswick. He may not have time to complete the upper floors. The lack of parking will hamper anyone looking at the Brunswick as an investment. We have one derelict hotel on Andy Devine already, preserving the lease. We'll keep the Brunswick, Garbaldi's and the Studios, a viable investment in Kingman. Kingman asks that you reconsider canceling the lease. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Council, do you have any comments? Questions? Yeah, Jane?
Can you remind us what the rate is to lease that lot right now?
Thank you, Councilwoman Staley. It currently is at $50 a month for that, and I think, as was evidenced in the previous item with the sale of 519 and the consideration for what that parking lot value and having that parking lot there, $50 a month for that parking lot, I think, is a significantly low amount. We did consider, when I spoke with Vernon, we did consider the two lots, or we did propose offering the two lots at $50 a month, which would align with what we found in our justification for the 519 Beale sale. For two lots, in our type of setting, $50 a month for two lots would be, two stalls, thank you, for two stalls, would be about that.
Mm-hmm. Okay. $50 sounds like a smoking deal, just for those two spots, the square footage compared to the other, but, okay, thank you.
And the existing, yeah, so to answer your question, the existing lease is $50 for the whole parking lot.
Right.
A month, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and maybe one follow-up. They were responsible for maintaining that lot this whole time as well, correct?
That is correct. So the terms of the agreement basically held that at the end of the agreement, the parking lot would be needed, would have to be in the same condition as what it was accepted in.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, I will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion that we terminate the lease.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have, all those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to action item 4C, River Medical AMR Annual Agreement. This is an annual agreement between River Medical, AMR, and the City of Kingman to provide dedicated ambulances, facilitate electronic data sharing, implement quality assurance measures, and engage in future partnerships regarding the Certificate of Necessity process. There will be a minimal fiscal impact to the general fund. Staff recommends approval. Chief Jaeger, good evening.
Vice Mayor and council, thanks for letting me speak tonight. So that was a good description of it. I'll just, I'd like to add to that just a little bit. Contracting with River Medical offers the City of Kingman several advantages, including access to specialized expertise and improved efficiency, having dedicated response units in the City of Kingman boundaries at all times. The contract can also help us manage liability, ensure quality standards are met, and facilitate electronic data sharing. Quality Assurance, this contract specifies quality standards, performance metrics, and procedures for addressing issues. By sharing this information with each other, we are all held to the City of Kingman accreditation standards, ensuring a consistent level of care for our community. The electronic data sharing. This contract includes provisions for electronic data sharing between the City of Kingman, River Medical, and the Kingman Regional Hospital systems. By having this in place, we can adjust response models and staffing levels when we identify areas of needed improvements. This will also improve communications and coordination for the response personnel with the ultimate goal of providing a better level of care to our community and visitors. In closing, I have asked our EMS partners, Brad Shelton and Chuck Hawkins, they're here with River Medical, and I'm prepared to answer any questions, or I can call them up to answer questions as well.
Council, do we have any questions for Chief Jaeger? Counselor Dykens?
Are we going to hear from AMR before we go?
Are we going to hear from AMR before we go to questions or comments?
Do we have any, do you have anything specific, or?
I didn't know if he had anything additional to give.
If you have questions, I do not. You have all the supporting documents, and if you have questions, I'm here. If you'd like to speak with them, they're more than happy to come up here.
Do you have specific questions for AMR?
Just comments.
Okay.
I met with Chief Yager yesterday and Assistant Chief.
Flanagan.
Flanagan, he's Assistant Chief. I didn't want to promote him from this bench here. We had a good, long meeting, about an hour and a half. Because of my history, I kind of wound up the office, making sure everything looked good with contract, and I'm impressed. I think it's a smart idea. I think it's a great idea for the city to work with AMR, and AMR work with the city, especially in the pursuit of getting a partial or a share of a permanent CON.
Counselmember Dykens, would you mind turning your mic on? Thank you.
I think somebody shuts it off on me. Anyways, I don't have to start over, do I? Okay, no, I really don't. But I think it's a great idea for that, because having a partial CON shared with AMR is only going to be a huge benefit for the citizens of our community. So that's my quarter and a half.
All right, perfect. Any other comments? Counsel Staley?
I wanted to ask you about Priority One and their investment in this process.
So as of this morning, we were notified that they have pulled their application out of the process.
They have?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was confirmed this morning.
Okay, that helps me, because I had a, I had a problem with us as a government entity stepping in the way of a private business that had already made an investment in our community by trying to fill this void. So thank you for answering that for me. That makes a big difference.
Counselors, any other comments? I do have some comments and some questions. It's unfortunate that Priority pulled out. Is my understanding they were going to have a hearing?
At the end of the month.
At the end of the month?
Yeah.
So I feel that with us entering into contract, or potentially entering into contract, they weren't going to pursue those, the hearing and all the cost going forward. So I had a question about the sharing of information. As you know, I've had an issue with dispatch and them not being a part of the dispatch system. I've been on several ride-alongs with our fire folks, and I love to see them all here. So I've heard the struggles of, you know, them not getting, you know, them not getting on scene, sharing information, getting canceled. I would like you to elaborate on exactly what's going to be shared, and is it going to go through our dispatch system? Are they going to be self-reporting? Tell me what that looks like, and it's obviously sufficient enough, otherwise you wouldn't be standing here with this contract. So I want to make sure that you're getting everything you need from AMR in this contract.
Yeah, so first and foremost, they, they'll be providing dedicated units to the city, and so the response times will do nothing but improve when we have dedicated units in the city. So as far as the data, now working with them and the electronic systems that we have, and I'm not a computer person by no means, but it allows us to share our data with each other. And the other, the biggest component, one of them of the contract, is it requires us to have the quarterly meetings and look at data with each other and determine where the gaps are and how we fix those gaps. And so it gets us, it requires us to come to the table and share our data with each other. And so that's, to me, that's a, that's a big win, one of the wins, there's multiple with this, to moving forward.
Okay.
And again, I wholeheartedly believe in this contract, that it's going to improve our partnership and our, our working relation with each other, moving forward by having the meetings and looking at our data and making sure that we're addressing issues when the issues come to light and not waiting for months to address those issues.
Okay. And then let's talk about response times. I know response times are at a state standard, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm sure we have our own set of standards?
We do, and our standards are very high.
And they're going to be able to comply?
High in a good way.
No, yeah.
I mean, we, our response times are low, and we want to make sure that we're getting there as quick as we can. Again, the CON process, I'm sorry to cut you off. The CON process has different restraints on time requirements. And so again, working with the partner, having the dedicated units in town, that's where we come together and work on cleaning up those response times to where they improve for both agencies.
Okay, because that is a huge concern of mine. I don't want them to continue to be held to the state standards, which our standards are better, and I would like to be reassured that they're going to be held to your standards, chief.
To be honest, they won't meet my standards. I'm going to be upfront with you, they will not meet my standards, but they will do their best, I was assured, to meet the standards and be there in a timely fashion. Again, by providing dedicated units in the city, now we're not waiting on units to come, coming from Golden Valley, coming from Lake Havasu. We still may have those based on call volume if all the units are busy, but again, having the dedicated units in the city, that they're there for us. And so I see their response times improving drastically.
Okay.
Just based on that alone.
I want to get back to that, pulling units and staffing units inside the city, the dedicated units, but first I want to talk about the CON. So they're going to help us through the process of getting the CON.
Correct.
What, if any, do we have recourse if we don't get that CON? Now we're back to us not having a CON, and we're back to one ambulance company that we're at the mercy.
Again, I'm not going to speak for them on certain things. I'm more than happy to bring.
That's fine, because my follow-up, my follow-up question is to them, so I was going to let you finish.
Certainly, that partnership, in worst-case scenario, we do not achieve our CON, we still have a contract with them that the city would ultimately have. Come on up, Brad. But again, I'll let Brad speak for his agency.
Thank you, chief.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
Vice Mayor, council members. First off, I'd like to say a big thank you to these two gentlemen over here and to the chief for all the hard work that's gone into putting this contract together and getting to where we are today. So it was a lot of work. We understand very clearly how we got to that point and why there was some concern, and I think both of us do. This, this contract does a few things. Obviously, there's a lot of data sharing that goes back and forth. It opens up a lot of transparency for both agencies. It allows us to build a system within, within the community of Kingman, not a fire agency, an ambulance agency, a hospital agency, an air agency. It really allows us to build a system that we are at the table regularly and auditing and evaluating, and both agencies making changes to fit the needs of both of our goals. So talking about response times and those types of things, when we dedicate ambulances to the city, right now, we have a much larger geographical area that we're responsible for. We will continue having that responsibility, but we will have certain units that are committed and designated to the city limits of Kingman. What that allowed us to do is strategically place those units, our units and the City of Kingman's units, if you're successful in getting a CON, which, I don't want to speak for the state of Arizona, but there should be absolutely no problem with obtaining that CON. It should be a very easy process, very inexpensive, especially with us by your side, you know, assisting in that process and supporting you in that process. We've done a very like-like program in Lake Havasu City. It's extremely successful, and I recommend if you have any concerns, that please talk to the council members in that city. It's worked very, very well. Getting back to the deployment, though, it allows us to deploy these units, much like you put fire stations in your community. We have already identified locations that our units need to be, the city's units need to be, so that we can deploy, much like the fire engines, to certain areas of the community that have response time criteria that we decide we need to meet. So if that's, if that's seven minutes, if that's ten minutes, if that's twelve minutes, whatever that, that is, we'll best deploy those units, working together on where they need to strategically be within the city to make those times. And then we have the opportunity to share that data and evaluate it and see where we're short, or where we're exceeding, where we can change some of those geographical lines to meet what we're looking for.
I wanted to talk about the shifting of units. So with this dedication to the City of Kingman, what does that do to our outlying, our rural areas? Are you pulling units in from there? Are you going to have enough coverage? I don't want to put our rural communities at a disadvantage, because the City of Kingman now has dedicated units.
Sure, no, I understand what you're saying. I appreciate the concern. Listen, the way we got here started in the days of COVID, right? When we had, we, law enforcement, hospital staff, fire department staff, we had a lot of people exit, right, the workforce? And we were all very hard-pressed to get employees. Our, our employees are not quick. We can't hire anybody off the street and then train them. A lot of that time is getting certificates and schooling, and it takes time to educate. So during COVID, it was a struggle. There was no doubt that there was a struggle with, with units and employees and getting things where they need to be. We weren't unique here in Kingman, it was across the country. And, you know, to some degree, that is still happening in a lot of places. My agency and I have done a lot of work, have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in investing in recruiting and teaching and putting employees through Earn While You Learn programs to get them certified, moving them from layperson to EMT through paramedic school. Our staffing has come up tremendously, and that was the big driver for that. Just a reminder, I mean, our agency has been here since the early eighties in this community. Many of our folks live here, grew up here, built some of the stations here. We, we care about this community as much as anybody that's sitting here today. So it's, we want what's best for this community as well. But like some of us, that's where we started, it was in COVID with, there just wasn't enough ambulances, period. There wasn't enough fire trucks, there wasn't enough nurses, there wasn't enough law enforcement. We've recovered from that. We're not a hundred percent where we want to be yet, but we are light years ahead of where we were.
Okay, thank you.
To that, I will.
Counsel Savage?
This question is just a little off-kilter. On facilitated electronic data sharing, when you're picking up a patient on an accident or whatever, do you have direct contact with a hospital to be prepared for those types of injuries that are, you may think, be so they're ready to go right off the bat?
Yeah.
Do you have that sharing with hospitals?
So we do. We have phone contact, radio contact. They actually speak, if they're the paramedic on the incident, with the ER to make sure that everything's covered and taken care of.
Any other comments? Counsel Staley?
Chief, I would just ask that, if it's possible, after your quarterly meetings, if you could send a summary to the city manager and he could share that in his weekly reports to us, because I'd really, I want to make sure that we are having those open lines of communications and we're seeing positive results and improvements. And likewise, if we're not, we want to start planning for an alternative way to service our community.
Understand, the contract also dictates that you'll get an annual review of the program as well, so, but absolutely.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, if I could just add just a little bit, one second, just for clarification. There was a competitor that was trying to come into the area, and I know there was some, you know, either some neutrality or some support there. That competitor was actually denied by the Department of Health Services to come into the area several months back. So they, the way that process works is DHS approves or denies those. So the, the hearing that was happening, was it appellate hearing? That likely wasn't going to change the outcome. And the chief and I and the city manager have had many discussions, with or without them being here, we, you know, we want to be a good partner. We've done that in other communities with absolutely no challengers in the area. We have no challenger right now, and we want to move forward with being a good partner for this city, so.
Well, with that being said, I would like to remind you that this contract and the availability for dedicated ambulances did not come to light until that competitor came into the area. So we were not offered, as a city, the data sharing, we were not offered, as a city, dedicated ambulance services. So I just want to put that into perspective, that we were not offered any of these services that now are before us as an approved, proposed contract. And I am with you, Counsel Staley, that I too would like to see those, and if we, if we don't see improvement, you know, we've kind of, if we approve this, we're going to put our eggs all in one basket, and I'm not a fan of that. I'm a fan of private industry, I'm a fan of competition, it makes us all better, it makes us do better. So I want chief to keep the lines of communication open with the city manager and forward to the council, because if this doesn't improve or it's not working out, I would like to, I would like a way out as well. So chief, I'm going to, I'm going to trust, you're the expert, and you have put a contract before us, and I'm going to trust that this is in the best interest always of the City of Kingman, and even though I'm hesitant, I'm going to support this item. And it's because of you.
Well, thank you for that, but I, just to be clear, I can't look at what happened in the past. I mean, I obviously have to worry about history, but to move forward, I truly believe this is the best direction that the city can take right now, especially knowing that if we want to achieve a CON, this is the easiest, cheapest, quickest way to do that. And again, having, starting over with our partner to make sure we improve our programs, and then certainly report that back to you, I firmly believe what we're doing is the right thing to do for long-term success of the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve and move forward with this amended River Medical AMR Annual Agreement.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Public hearings, five A, Z zero two five dash zero 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 two, ordinance nineteen sixty-six. We'll go ahead and give you guys an opportunity to exit. All right. Item five A, Z zero two five zero dash zero 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 two, ordinance one nine six six, zone ordinance amendment to reduce the front yard setback from thirty feet to twenty feet in the R one twenty zone. Staff initiated, a staff-initiated application in accordance with section two dash five zero of the City of Kingman zoning code to amend the city zoning code originally adopted on April sixth, twenty twenty-one. The subject amendment reduces the minimum required front yard setback from property zoned R one twenty from thirty feet to twenty feet. Staff recommends approval. Welcome, Jason.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, counsel, appreciate it tonight. So before you, as a zone text amendment, this is to amend the zoning, or the setbacks for the zone of the R one twenty, the half-acre zoning designation that we have within the city's municipal code. As you may recall, we were back before you, back in January, seeking direction, we'd had requests from the development community to revert back to the twenty-foot setback, which was initially allowed in the previous zoning code. When we adopted the new twenty, the new code in twenty twenty-one, that setback was increased to thirty feet. Ultimately, is what it is. Ultimately, as what it's done is it's required us to look at individual case-by-case bases and grant either deviations from it in the form of variance or a minor reduction to allow for development to continue. With that being said, we came back before the council, seeking direction as to whether or not we wanted to stay with the 30 feet, or did we want to come back with the 20 feet at council's direction. We were bringing that back before you this evening. So if approved tonight, it would amend table 3-20.030A, which you can see the front yard setbacks under the R120 designation. You'll see the 30 is struck out with the 20-foot being proposed. Ultimately, it allows for the updates to the city's code to better align with the needs of the development community, provides consistency amongst the properties that are zoned R120, facilitates development that provides for space in the rear yard, recreational amenities such as pools, accessory structures, including but not limited to accessory dwelling units. And it is supported by the findings of the city's zoning code and was discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission, which you have the staff report included in your reports. There is no outside agency comments. This particular project was noticed back on March 31st in the Kingman Minor. Planning and Zoning Commission, in a vote of 3 to 1 at its regular meeting on March 12th, did recommend approval of ZO25-002 to the Mayor and City Council. And again, tonight, staff is recommending approval. Available for any questions?
Council, any questions? All right. I'll entertain a motion. Oh, yes, we do. Thank you. With that, I'll open up the public hearing. We have nobody here to speak on the public hearing. I will then close the public hearing. Now I will entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I'm going to turn the meeting over for item 5B to Counselor Ward.
Item 5B, Resolution 5551, Case SB22006, Central Subdivision, Preliminary Platte, Track 6054. SB22-006, a preliminary platte, central subdivision, Track 6054, to create 84 single-family residential lots on approximately 19.13 acres of land. The property is zoned residential, single-family, 6,000 square foot minimum lot size, R16, and residential manufactured homes, 6,000 square foot lot size, RMH6. The subject property is located north of Walupi Mountain Road, west of Central Street, and includes APN 321-11-115, 321-11-114. Applicant, Civil Works Engineering LLC, for CAG Realty, for LLC property owner.
Councilman Ward, Council, thank you. So before you tonight is the central subdivision, Track 6054, also known as SB22-006. This is a preliminary platte, as described. As discussed, this particular property is located just west of Central. This is going to be north of Walupi Mountain Road. It's also located east of Indigo and south of Karen Avenue. The property is zoned RMH6, which does allow for single-family homes in a 6,000 square foot minimum lot area. It also does allow for a mobile home type development, which was actually some of the contention when it went through the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. So as discussed, the properties to the east or to the west of this is also zoned RMH6. To the east, it's R16, again, both having minimum lot areas of 6,000 square feet. To the north, R18, 8,000 square feet, and to the south, RR, as well as R110. So a little bit about the project site. It's 19.13 acres, subdivided, being proposed into 84 lots, including five lots for retention purposes, five street extensions, and two new cul-de-sacs. The site was annexed into the city of Kingman under ordinance number 443. At the time, it had a zoning designation of RR. It was rezoned back, I believe it was 1996. I can't see it on there, but it was rezoned to R16. And then there's two historical zonings on the project site, and that westerly portion of the project site is the only portion that has the mobile home designation on it. If we were to take that designation and apply it to the site and apply it to the lot areas that's being proposed by the applicant, only four lots would be developable with a mobile home unit. I'll discuss it a little bit further in the conditions of approval, but that's not the intent of this developer. He's developing, he's proposing to develop single-family stick-built homes on the minimum lot size of eight, or 6,000 square feet. Overall, the project results in a density of 4.6 dwelling units to the acre, which is consistent with that of the general plan, which allows three to eight dwelling units to the acre. As you can see on this particular exhibit, there's multiple points of access to the proposed subdivision. The lots ranging from 6,091 square feet to 10,498 square feet. And again, it results in a density of 4.6 dwelling units to the acre. Across the project site, there is being proposed approximately 86,836 square feet of area for retention purposes. A little bit of history in regards to that, and as indicated in the staff report, this particular project was actually started in 2022. It's had multiple delays. It's had multiple revisions to the project site. I will, I will take ownership of it. Some of that actually came from our department through the process. So before you, being recommended tonight is that we would accept these particular retention basins, even though we do understand that it is council's direction that these retention areas be retained by the property owner. Overall, the lots are compliant with the zoning ordinance that's already adopted. It implements the visions and goals of the policies of our 2040 general plan, promotes residential development that's in harmony with the surrounding residential neighborhoods, promotes and develops an adjacent roadways, further improving the city's circulation network. The proposed subdivisions, in conjunction with the conditions of approval and as amended before you this evening, continue to have the public's best interests, health, wealth, safety, and convenience and welfare of the city. As again, we discussed, there are four, five lots that are dedicated for retention purposes. So I mentioned amended conditions of approval. So when this went before the Planning and Zoning Commission, the conditions located on the left of your screen were that, that was proposed at the time and adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission and recommended for approval. Due to the public hearing and the comments that we heard that evening, to ensure that there was no intention of there being any type of manufactured homes on this lot, staff did reach out to the applicant, and through the applicant's concurrence, they were fine with amending those conditions of approval specifically to state that it would be prohibited. And so that would actually be part of the platte when it gets recorded. The only way you could come back and put a mobile home back on this would be to come back and actually do a revised or a new platte, which would come back before the public hearing process as it stands today. One condition was missed when we were doing the conditions of approval, so that condition is number six, which the pre-platte becomes null and void after two years after the date of approval unless an extension is granted. Engineering department's comments are included in your staff report. Unisource did have comments, just ensuring that they still had access to their easements within the public right-of-ways. Mailed notices, as well as the site was posted, as well as published in the Kingman Minor, all of those meeting state statute requirements. Public correspondence received by the Planning and Zoning Commission was also included in your package for your consideration. Planning and Zoning Commission voted in a meeting four to zero at its regular meeting of March 12th, and that recommended approval of this particular item to the Mayor and City Council. Staff, again, is recommending the same, same action this evening, however, to adopt the amended conditions of approval, conditions one through six. I'm available for any questions?
This one kind of confused me a little bit, especially about the manufactured homes. Definitely not against manufactured home. I lived in a beautiful one in California. If, for some reason, they do decide, because everything can change, but you said it's limited to four.
As this platte was developed, it's limited to four.
Can you show us where those four would be?
So it's actually at the very top. So if you were looking at the site, it would be at the southwest corner of the project site, and these lots front Indigo.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Savage, if I could also clarify, if they were to do that, they would have to come back with a new platte. So the portion that's along Indigo, just above where those arrows are showing, that portion is, does have the MH6 designation. So if they came back with a revised platte, again, subject to the public hearing process that we have in place today, it would be that particular strip that would be eligible for it.
Who did you say was going to be responsible for the retention area?
Council Dykens, council members. So with respect to this particular project, they are actually asking that the city of Kingman retain those particular areas. So they're dedicating it to the city for maintenance purposes.
How many more of these are going to come to us with that same approach versus what council said? We don't want any more that the city's going to have to pay for.
Councilman Dykens, Council, with respect to projects that are in process, I know of at least one more that is coming forth before you. I can assure you that when the policy was set by this council, that information has been disseminated to applicants that were coming into the process. However, we did have applications that were already submitted, understanding that the ordinance still does need to take place with its 30-day waiting period. This one fell short of that, and again, I do know of at least one additional application that will be forthcoming. I think it's, it's important to understand that there's a lot of pre-plats, and when the pre-plats have multiple phases, those are probably likely the opportunities or times that you're going to see that, because now in their future phases, they would have to incorporate a form of an HOA as to where the earlier phases of that same development may not have that.
That was my concern, too, but I had talked to Carl and Manager Wallace earlier. This one, apparently, the ordinance is not in effect, so we don't have much choice on this one. But when the ordinance takes effect, we definitely want to enforce it. I mean, okay.
Thank you.
We don't have anything else?
Good.
I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? I'll close the public hearing. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve SB22-0006 with the conditions number one through six as amended.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Department reports. Presentation of the Kingman Police Department's 2024 Annual Report.
I have it. I put it on here. You can do it either right here or you put that.
Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Council. I appreciate the opportunity to, again, present our annual report. This time, it's for 2024. And I previously provided the report to you. And I also want to let you and the public know that the report is available for the public to have access to. If you go to kingmanpolice.com and select annual reports, we have all of our annual reports, and it'll be the one at the, at the very top. I hit it twice to see. This slide, as previous years, has a lot of data on it, and I wanted just to highlight a few things. That, the first thing that stood out to me when we put this together, that we had a 6% increase in total calls for service compared to the previous year, and which was significant departure from the previous five years. Those years maintained they were relatively flat in total calls for service. It's also important for me to point out to you that these statistics are only highlights of the major crimes that most people are interested in in the community, that we handle every year. But what's not included in these statistics are police actions involving involvements similar to or such as disorderly conduct, warrant arrests, trespass incidents, traffic stops, department service calls, civil issues, suspicious circumstances. We assist, AOA assists other agencies in medical calls, we have death investigations, tobacco offenses, and there's other misdemeanor crimes. Also, field interviews are not included in this. But within all of our total calls for service in 2024, there was a large increase in vehicle thefts. It was an increase of 82%. It's something most people are aware of. And in 100 of those incidents, and were roughly 100, involved that social media trend of stealing Kias and Hyundai's, which we have made several arrests, and those incidents have stopped for the most part. So that's something that I'm happy to report. There was also a 26% increase in domestic violence incidents and a 32% increase in drug-related offenses. And I like to point out, in regards to domestic violence incident increases, there's minimal things that law enforcement can do. These are things that are happening in the home. But what I can tell you about the drug-related offenses is that it generally is a result of officer-initiated activities, and that increased. But what contributed mostly to those increase in total calls for service, and what I am proud to share, was that the officer-generated activity increased 25%. So what officer-generated activity is, is when officers are not obligated to a call or writing reports or follow-up, they are encouraged and directed and expected to take proactive enforcement, right? Make themselves known, traffic stops, contact people, do business checks, all of those things that you would expect. And that did result in a 25% increase in calls. So that's a significant amount of, that 6% increase overall, that contributes a big chunk of that. So again, some of those officer-generated calls for service include drug offenses, criminal traffic offenses like DUI, criminal speed, warrant arrests, the urban camping enforcement. All of those are indicative of officers' proactive enforcement. Adult arrests were up 25%. Juvenile arrests were up 71%. And what I like to point out with these statistics and all of these types of calls, the incidence of violence or the potential for violence is steadily increased year after year. It's hard to track. It's somewhat anecdotal, but I do know, and I like to share, you know, 10 years ago, one officer could handle, go to a call and handle it himself. Well, now, just because of the increase in the potential for violence, oftentimes, we're sending two, maybe three officers to a call to handle that situation safely. I want to point out as well that we submit all of our crime data to the state through what's called UCR NiBRS. It's Uniform Crime Reporting National Incident Reporting System. That information is sent to the state. The state then forwards it to the FBI, who does the national statistics. And we are a NiBRS-certified agency. We attained that two years ago. And to be a NiBRS-certified agency, you have to submit your crime data with, with error rate of less than 4%. And I'm proud to tell you that our submissions, our error rate is less than 1%. So what that means is an error, they vet it and they check it. If it isn't matched up correctly, it gets sent back to us, it's corrected, and it's resubmitted. So the data that the state receives is accurate. All that data does go to the, ultimately goes to the Federal Bureau of Investigation. They track the national crime stats. They're a year behind. So if you were to go to the FBI site, FBI.gov, their information is for 2023. The state of Arizona, it is current for 2023. The state of Arizona, it is current for 2024, and that information can be obtained at arizonacrimestatistics AZDPS.gov. Statewide, I can report to you that overall crime incidents for 2024 are down 5%. Of those, the violent crimes are down 4.5%. Kingman's overall crime rate, violent crime, is down 10%. And I can tell you of those violent crimes, our clearance rate is 68%, which is, which is good. Meaning they were solved, someone was arrested, it was taken care of. On these statistics, on traffic crashes, it was four less than last year, five less than last year. But that includes private property crashes on this particular slide. And there was 338 private property crashes that we handled last year. Currently in 2025, and year-to-date, our overall calls for service, as of a couple of weeks ago, they're tracking up 3% currently. Doesn't mean it'll stay that way, it just means that's where we're currently at. Any questions on that data? This slide shows our traffic stats. Our traffic crashes on this slide do not include private property crashes. And there was an increase of 3% from the previous year. But what I want to point out, obviously, some of that can be attributed to increase in traffic. You've all seen, there's an increase every year, it's more and more, especially on Stockton Hill Road. But our citations and our written warnings went up 61%. And our citations alone, which means not counting warnings, increased by 92%. Not that I'm happy that people are getting tickets, but I'm happy that officers are taking initiative and being proactive to slow people down. And just so to be clear, we do not have quotas, there isn't any of that. But I do, and I have made it clear to my staff and my team, that we do need to increase our traffic enforcement efforts whenever possible, and I do want to see an increase in citations. If you remember, last year, our warnings were several thousand more than the citations were. So we have, we have made that change. And our highest incident of intersection-related crashes, as you, would be no surprise, is Stockton Hill Road between Detroit and Gordon. Some highlights. Last year, 2024, was our first year of re-accreditation. We received our accreditation four years prior. Every four years through the Accreditation Program, ALIP, Arizona Law Enforcement Accreditation Program, you go through a whole, it's like a brand-new assessment, where you have two or three assessors from other agencies across the state. They meet and come to your agency, and they go through everything that you have to make sure that we're meeting all of those 172 standards of best practices. And we were able to obtain that last year. We also continue to invest and develop leadership and executive leadership in the agency, preparing for retirements, you know, succession planning, and developing our supervisors. We have a young supervisory corps, our mid-level supervisors, sergeants. Even our lieutenants are relatively new in their positions. We continue to develop them. We do have a community feedback program. If you call into dispatch, there's calls, certain calls are designated. The people calling will automatically get a text, and it's a survey, asking, same thing with fire department, asking if how things were, were they satisfied with the service, did the officer answer their questions? And I can tell you that our feedback is always in the high 80s to 90%, which I think is acceptable. Not everybody's happy when the police show up. I would joke about the fire department, but everybody's happy when the fire department shows up. Grant funding, we still have a pretty robust grant funding program. My support services administrator is amazing at this. And we, a big chunk of our grants goes towards funding the Magnet Task Force operation. And we also have grant funding that helps us provide specialized traffic enforcement, DUI enforcement. Click at our ticket, it's going to come up in a month, you'll see on the next council agenda. So we're proud of the grant. Training, we continue to do training. We send officers off-site as often as we can for the training. But there is, I have a pretty amazing training team that puts together internal training, so we're able to handle that ourselves. We have many well-qualified, well-qualified and capable certified instructors that can provide in-house training. So it's something that we're very proud of. And our Officer Wellness Program, we've had it, it's pretty robust as well, we've had it for several years. Something we implemented last year to add to it is we require every police officer and certain special assignment details, such as our crime scene technicians, to have a face-to-face through a computer. It's a Zoom meeting for a half hour, once a year. And the provider on the other end is somebody that has law enforcement experience and understands what we go through. So that's something that has been well-received by the officers. Our recruitment team still stays active, we're still, it's one of our priorities, is recruitment. And we're still working. It was alluded to earlier today, or tonight, we're still struggling with finding qualified people to fill those roles. But our recruitment team is doing great work. And we have our volunteers, we call them our VIPs, volunteers in police service. There's 10 volunteers that we have, and they provide thousands of hours every year doing some administrative things, they help us with traffic control. We have impound hearings that they take care of. They help us with internal things as well within the building. Amazing group of people. And the most recent addition, I suppose, last year, about halfway through the year, we were able to assign a specialized child crimes detective. So we filled that position. And ICAC is Internet Crimes Against Children. We get tips, multiple tips. I'll save several every week, if not multiple every month, in regards to the child exploitation-type crimes that might occur on the internet. And the detective that's been assigned to that is doing amazing work. There was kind of a backlog, I would say, and that detective's been able to get us caught up in a relatively short period of time. And in that, it resulted in numerous arrests for child exploitation crimes and putting people in jail. So looking forward, again, recruitment and retention remains a priority. We're currently seven officers down, meaning unfilled officer-approved, full-time officer positions. Three of our existing officers are on injured reserve, and we do have one officer that's been on an extended military deployment. And we're hoping that he will be coming back and then sometime this summer. Unfilled, currently on specialty assignments, we have specialty assignments that are unfilled. And as we hire officers and fill those vacancies, then we'll be able to assign another officer to fill those specialty spots. So those specialty spots include our Street Crimes Unit. We're currently our School Resource Program, they're one officer short. Our Detective Bureau, we'll put another detective in there once we get some positions filled. Traffic, we also provide a officer to the Police Academy in Lake Havasu City as a police advisor. And we will fill that position as soon as we're able to as well. We currently have two unfilled sergeant positions. Those two positions, they promoted last year to lieutenant, and we didn't promote those until we have our officer positions filled. So those lieutenants and others are taking on those duties, and we're all sharing those duties. But those, those two lieutenants are still doing a big share of what they were doing as sergeants, and there's some others as well as helping, helping them out. So as soon as we hire, get some qualified officers, we'll fill those positions as soon as possible. So those two vacancies are currently the traffic sergeant and animal control. That one sergeant's responsible for that, and our professional standards side of the house. Also, leadership development, I mentioned that before, but we're constantly looking at ways to develop the future leaders of the agency. Again, we have a lot of young officers and young supervisors, some of us at the top end of the agency, been here for a while, and retirement is always looming out there on the horizon. So we want to make sure that the department's in good shape. And then the last item on the looking forward there is our property and evidence is in a current accreditation program. When we received our accreditation initially, that was included. But there's a new accreditation option that we signed up for through the Arizona Law Enforcement Accreditation Program, and it focuses solely on our Property and Evidence section. That's a high liability area, and there's best practices that we want to attain, and we're going to enter into that, we're in that, preparing for that. We're about 80% there. So I know, I believe that this summer, we'll have assessors visit our department, and then we'll ultimately receive the evidence and property accreditation. Wanted to update you on urban camping. There isn't a report on this in the annual report, but I do know I can see us including this next, for this year, on next year's report. And I already sent to you about a month ago the stats on what our enforcement has looked like and the statistics on that, since it became active on February 6th. And I can tell you that I have not received any complaints regarding that, but I do get questions when I'm at community events. And some of those questions are similar to, is this making being homeless a crime? What are these people supposed to do? And is arresting and putting them in jail going to solve anything? And I always try to say the same thing, and I put it here on the slide, but the ordinance isn't meant to criminalize homelessness, but to protect the interests of the community by ensuring that private and public spaces remain safe, clean, and accessible for everybody. And encouraging those individuals to take advantage of available resources. So I would want to tell you that public safety is my first priority. And enforcement of the ordinance does protect the public health, and it provides a sense of safety to our community. And my directive to my team has been very clear. Our enforcement should be done with empathy and compassion, but I believe that compassion requires structure and consistency. And that's our plan, and that's what we've been doing up to this, up to this point. And we'll continue to do. And that's it. We do have an active Facebook page, it's very popular, that's our, it's proven to be the most efficient way of communicating. Haven't got into the, whatever else is out there, Snapchat and the different things. But we are on X, but if you go to our X account, it just posts links to our Facebook page. And we also are involved with the Nextdoor app. It's kind of community-centric for certain areas in the, in the community in our town. We do participate in outreach events, and our KPD app continues to be very, very popular. So I encourage you, if you don't have it, just scan that QR code, it's free, sign up. And we use our app for public notification on high-profile events, significant traffic crashes, where there's going to be a detour, or if there's a high police presence activity somewhere, it may be appropriate for us to push that out and tell people what's happening. So we try to do that as much as possible. And all of this information is available at kingmanpolice.com. I also have a couple of the slide pages that I printed, and they're available there. If somebody wants those, they're available. Otherwise, I'd say thank you for the time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Chief Cooper. Do you have any questions or comments for Chief Cooper? Counselor Savage?
Vice Mayor. Good evening, Chief. Concerning internet charges, have you heard of a company named Safe Surfing?
Vaguely, yes.
I would check into that and get, maybe with a school district. The Moose Lodge is partnered with Surf Safety, and it, it's taught through the schools, and it protects the children, also from the parent's point of view of keeping the bad guys, so to speak, away from the children. They won't be able to access them. So if you wouldn't mind checking out Safe Surfing, I'd appreciate that.
I will, thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Counselor Staley?
Thank you for this report. I wanted to ask about the domestic violence, the increase that you're seeing. I'm curious, how many of those cases are able to make their way through Judge Singer's specialty court for domestic violence?
I don't know that, I don't know if city attorney would know. I think it has to go through their office prior to see if they qualify.
Right, it's, I couldn't tell you what the numbers are, but the misdemeanor ones, definitely, they would come to our office. And if it's something that, they don't have a prior history of these kind of issues, but something we feel that would be a compatible exchange of information, basically, everybody would be eligible, but there'd be just a few people getting knocked out because of, you know, prior history or something like that.
And that's still relatively new, so we wouldn't necessarily see it make an impact until maybe a year from now, or?
Right.
Okay, I was curious about that. And then I wanted to thank you for the traffic enforcement. I have noticed a huge difference in the way people are driving, they've slowed down, they aren't driving as erratically. It scared me straight, I'm terrified of getting pulled over now. So I think it's been really successful in just helping, helping the town be a safer place to commute. And so thank you for that, and thank you for all that.
You're welcome, absolutely, thank you.
Any other comments? I did have a couple of things. Retention, have you lost officers to neighboring communities, to Mojave County? Are you seeing any of that, or have we, have we corrected that, so?
We've slowed the flow, so to speak. We did lose an officer to Highway Patrol. Another officer went to work for a smaller agency, I think it was Relationship, involved nearby in the Parker area. But I do know that officers aren't looking, they're not tempted to be looking at other agencies like they were. So for sure, it's, we're definitely gaining ground. Our biggest challenge is the, just recruiting and getting. We currently have, how many do we have in the academy? Two. So we currently have two in the academy, there's several at our on-field training, so they'll be getting off out on their own soon as well. And we're hoping our injured reserve list, they'll be healed soon. But our biggest challenge is identifying qualified applicants. There's 20 will be invited to test, this is a rough example. A chunk of those won't pass the initial written test, and some, then the ones that do pass the written go to the physical exam. We're seeing some of those people fall out. And then the next part of it is the background investigation and the oral board process, and we lose people in those processes as well, so.
Are we seeing any interest from, like, lateral transfers, or people moving in from other agencies across the country? Are you?
Yes, we have. We did, we do have, I'll say, three lateral officers last year, or the year before, and they're working out very, very well for us. One was from, in, within Arizona. And then the other, there are several that are from other states. And we're able to get them, or they can challenge the test, we don't have to send them to the police academy again. And it's been successful for us. It's been worth the effort. Because it does take a lot of effort from my recruitment team, because I have to put them through this process and oversee for, it's about a month process, but they're able to do that, so.
Okay, I have one more, and then I'll get you, Counsel Dykens. Internet crimes against children. Would cyberbullying and things of that nature fall into that category as well? And are you seeing any kind of uptick in that, or are you tracking that?
I can't tell you, we don't track it.
Okay.
If it's a crime, we're going to take care of it. The bullying in and of itself isn't a crime. That's something that we do communicate with parents when we have the opportunity to talk or at the schools. Take your children off the internet, you know, delete that account, take their phone away. I know that's a big thing, but you know, that's what we try to do with that.
Okay, great, thanks. Counsel Dykens?
The two that are in the academy and the others that you mentioned just a minute ago, are they part, will they fill some of the seven vacancies, or are they already included as part of your force?
They're included as part of our force. So I appreciate you pointing that out, because that does add to the, the realistic impact of the officers on the ground. So those two are not. They are included. So those seven vacancies, we have not hired those people yet. So that puts us closer to 15, if you were to include those, as well as the officers that are on injured reserve or military appointment.
Any other comments? All right. Thanks to you and your team for keeping us safe.
Annie, I'm going to leave this alone.
All right. Manager Walsh, do we have Mr. Dorn? Oh, hello, good evening, Tom, how are you?
Good evening, how y'all doing?
Good, we're ready for you, legislative update.
Okay. Well, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, nice to see all of you. That was an excellent report by the police department, which, which I will bring up right away. House Bill 2221, it prohibits a city from defunding their police. So just wanted to put that out there, the prohibition, and that bill is moving along. So it sounds like Kingman has a great department, so it's good to, good to see that. Speaking of something that's good to see, we just got hot off the press, the veto letter from Governor Hobbs, vetoing all of- vetoing all of Gail Griffin's water bills. It's, I'm just going to read it to you, I'll skip over it. To the Speaker, "Today I vetoed the following bills," and there's seven bills. "Each of these bills was sponsored by Representative Gail Griffin. 'Disappointingly, none of these bills make a difference in solving the water policy challenges that Arizona residents and communities are facing. These bills either weaken rural groundwater protections or make pointless, trivial statutory changes that demean the rural Arizonans who have been asking the legislature for years to institute meaningful rural groundwater management measures. Since this, since day one of my administration, I have backed rural groundwater reform legislation with strong bipartisan support from across rural Arizona. We are currently negotiating an alternative framework for rural groundwater management, and I will not entertain any rural groundwater legislation that is outside the context of those negotiations." And then she goes on to say one more paragraph about protecting rural groundwater. So that's great news. As you all know, that's been the main item that we're working on down at the Capitol. And to have the governor just crush all of these other bills, send a very strong message to Gail Griffin and the Chair of the House Land, Agriculture, and Natural Resources Committee on this, on the natural, on the water committee, on this legislation, she's only going to sign what is something that rural Arizona supports and wants. So it'll be interesting to see, moving forward, how, how that is tied in with the whole ag-to-urban legislation that has been talked about by many of the home builders and developers, specifically in Pinal County, and then the far reaches of Maricopa County with Queen Creek and Buckeye, because they desperately need and want that for their development. So one of the big questions we had, how strong is the governor in protecting us? And that's just thrilling to, to read that, to know that she is firmly in our camp. So that's a good thing. Any questions on water, before I move on to some other quick issues?
Counsel? Nope, please continue.
Okay, Madam Vice Mayor, counsel, just some of the other major issues that we care about as a city is, is, you know, the, the planning and zoning and the housing issues. Just to recap some of them, I know JIPLIT doesn't affect you, the government lease excise tax, but that was vetoed by the governor. Some of the ADU legislation that's extending ADUs, accessory dwelling units statewide, that bill is moving along. The municipal development permits, the, your planning and zoning folks won't like this, but this is what'll allow the third party, third parties to come in to review the work, basically, of what your, your employees do in reviewing and approving permits. The Shire decision, that's been, going to be codified, looks like. Our members, Gillette and Biasucci, have voted yes on the bill. This is the one that prohibits public resources to be given to a private party for economic development purposes. It comes out of the Shire decision with, where they sued the mayor of Peoria, Carlot. SCR, SCR 1008, that's the one that we're concerned about, that I brought up to you last time I talked to you, and I did my math, and five, be five of yous to be two-thirds of a council would have to, or a board of supervisors would have to approve a fee or tax, any type of fee or tax increase to a government entity. So if that goes to the ballot, of course, it would probably pass. So we'll see what happens there. And the last one I brought up was law enforcement, I already talked about. Just with regard to the budget, the Finance Advisory Committee is going to be meeting this Thursday. And the Finance Advisory Committee, what they do, that's the one with the economists, they come in at once a quarter, and they sit down with the Joint Legislative Budget Committee, and they talk about the numbers. So, and, and the trends for our economy in the state. And the legislature, so once they have this FAC, or FAC presentation, as well as the, the tax numbers, you know, today's tax day, so all the, they're going to get the, all the tax revenues, the legislature and the governor are going to have a real sense of how much revenue we have as a state. And that will tend to drive where we go with the budget. Will special projects be funded? And you know, and Representative Gillette has projects for the City of Kingman in the pipeline that we're asking for, if there's enough money. So it's going to have to, we're going to, those things are going to be contingent upon, you know, what does the FAC say, and what does the Department of Revenue say as far as tax collections? With regard to, and I've already shared this with you, my personal frustration when they used to work, until they got it done, we are now moving, the Senate is going, already on a three-day work week. And the House is going to be moving towards that also. And I guess that's good for our elected officials to be back in the district and talk to their citizens and their constituents. However, it just really slows things down. And like I said, part of the delay, instead of pushing through, is they do want to see these numbers come through. The House and the Senate are starting to work together on trying to put their budget together. The governor has said that she's not interested in talking to them about the budget until the development of disabilities, there's about $130 million. Legislation was introduced yesterday in the House and today in the Senate. And that will help fund that supplemental appropriation, so those people can be funded, or we're out of money by May 1st, apparently. So once that's done, we're moving on to the budget, and some of the bills that I've mentioned will continue to move. And we hope that there's going to be a rural groundwater protection bill. But it's good to know, it will, nothing else is going to happen unless the governor and all of us get what we want to. That's good to hear. Madam Vice Mayor, council members, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Dorn? No? Well, thank you very much for your update, appreciate it, and stay in touch.
All right, thank you. Everyone have a happy Easter.
Thanks you as well. All right, item number seven, announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. We'll start with you, Manager Walsh.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, nothing to report tonight.
All right, Counsel Savage?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Counsel Ward? Counsel Staley?
Yeah, I just quickly wanted to say that the Kingman Youth Advisory Commission had a park cleanup on Friday. They've committed cleaning up Centennial Park twice a month, on top of all the other projects they're doing, like they're getting ready to do some bed building for children that don't have beds. And they also took in donations of bedding to help with that project as well. So I just, I, I know I've already given them a shout-out recently, but they're really working hard to, to do great community work. And I'm, I'm very proud of these high school students, they have a lot on their plates. Some of them are getting ready to graduate, and they're still showing up for community service. And, and it's all their choice, they, they, these are projects they chose to do, so shout out to that group.
Thank you, Counsel Staley. Counsel Dykens? Nothing?
I have a few things. I attended the golf commission meeting on Monday. Although it was lengthy, it was very effective. So I feel like they're on the right path, and we're going to be well-represented for our golf commission in working through, making the golf course even better than it is already. So Councilman Walker is the liaison, so I was only there just because he couldn't be. Want to tell you all, on April 19th, there's a technology recycle drive with Mojave Community College Computer Club and the City of Kingman Public Works. So you can get rid of any unused technology. Saturday, April 19th, 8:30 to 12, at the City of Kingman Public Works Yard, 3700 East Andy Devine Avenue. Then there's breakfast with the Easter Bunny, put on by our Parks and Rec, Saturday, April 19th. There's a set, two sessions, 8:00 to 9:30, and 10:00 to 11:30. So you have to pre-register. And it looks like today was the day to pre-register, so I think we have till midnight tonight. So make sure you pre-register, and then I wanted to wish everybody a happy Easter.
Counsel requests for future reports and updates. Anyone have any requests for future reports, updates? All right, we have no executive session this evening, so with that, I will adjourn.